Welcome to the Monday, February 7th, 2022 virtual meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
I'll roll Mayor Pandalian.
Here.
Alderman Morris.
Here.
Alderman Karas.
Here.
Alderman Rommel.
Here.
Alderman Notes.
Yep.
Alderman Preschlack.
Here.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Here.
Alderman Bushman.
Here.
Alderman Weber.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum. No quorum.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I need to make the obligatory opening statement. In accordance with state statute, I have made a determination that it was not practical or prudent to schedule an in-person city council meeting because of the COVID-19 pandemic, which is why this February 7th, 2022, city council meeting will be held remotely. The first item on the agenda is the reports of city officers. First is comments by the mayor. We don't have any official reports, but I would like to give a shout out to School District 67. I and a number of other city staff last Wednesday or Thursday went to various schools and read to groups of children. It was lots of fun. I actually read a book about a dog that runs for mayor against a candidate who is running on an anti-dog platform. Try that sometime in a suburban contest, and it's pretty entertaining. But the kids were great. They were incredibly well behaved and asked all kinds of great questions. And I read to a group of fourth graders, basically all the fourth graders at Cherokee School, and they had not had the opportunity to do the typical third grade field trip to City Hall. So they intentionally put me in front of that group. And we basically, in the question and answer session, covered a lot of the same ground that we normally cover during the fourth or the third grade field trip. So it was just a... My favorite question was, what's your favorite thing about being mayor? What's your favorite thing to do while, you know, being mayor? And I said, well, these are the fun things, you know? This is, these are the most fun things. It's just, you know, seeing all the kids and getting a chance to explain how the city government works to them and seeing all their fresh faces and bright eyes. So, and masks or no masks, they were, they were, they were all in. It was great, so. Jason, any reports, anything you'd like to comment on before we get started with the main agenda?
No, Mayor, thank you, but I had no report this evening.
Okay. Well, the next item on the agenda is an opportunity for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda matters. We can, you can provide public comments again on matters that are not on the agenda by dialing the number on the screen, 847-810-3643, or using the raised hand function on Zoom. So we'll wait a second here, and Leila or Mike will announce if there are any callers or raised hands. And we appreciate any comments.
Mr. Mayor, we have no callers at this time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we have no raised hands at this time.
Okay. Well, then we'll move on to committee reports. And the first, first and only report will be Alderman Karas is going to give us a brief update on the marketing initiatives and anxious to hear how the pop-up shop did in its third go-around over the holidays.
Okay, great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think maybe Leila or Mike are, they're going to advance the slides for me. Two things for you, though, I would love the name of the book you read, number one, because I haven't heard of that yet. And also, I think, I think...
I hope I can remember it.
I think a Q and A with maybe one of those students of fourth grade or ask these some questions for Lake Forest Love is in order. So I have to talk to Dana and pull that together. That'd be a lot of fun.
Sounds fun, sounds fun to me.
Okay, so I will get to the pop-up, but I'm going to start, actually, if we could start with the market. On the first page, I'm going to tell you about the holiday market. So yeah, go back to, go. Okay, great. So I don't know how many of you were able to swing by the holiday market, which was on two consecutive Saturdays in the month of December. It was our foray into a new market for the city of Lake Forest, a farmer's market, if you will. But we positioned this one as a holiday market to sort of test the waters. And it was titled "Celebrate the Holidays." We had about 12 vendors participate, all of whom were very, very enthusiastic about returning when we announced the dates for a summer market. Those vendors included food, homemade soups, dressings, chili, breads, pastries, cheese and chocolate. Other vendors sold handmade pottery, dried flower arrangements, and original artwork. We also had an attendance on both Saturdays. We had Elwa Farm, Lake Forest Library, and the Music Institute. They set up tables and spoke to residents about what they offer. The library talked with more than 200 residents who came by, and a number of those newer residents to the city actually signed up for library cards. So that was fun to see. The city team, led by Kathy Zerniak, are in touch with more than 60 additional vendors for a potential Saturday market over the summer, which is something we'd love to see put together with food trucks and music and hosted again on the west side of town. This is something that we, you know, have been talking about for a long time to try to drive more participation, community engagement, and traffic to the west side of town. So I'm looking forward to, to working with Kathy and the others in that group to, to make that happen. Next slide, please, we'll talk about the pop-up. So this was another return of the Lake Forest Station, opened in November. For six weeks, we had 14 nonprofits participating from across the community. We had a total of 20 shopping days. We grossed a record 70,000 in sales. City distributed those net proceeds among the nonprofits, who helped out the shop with volunteers. When they volunteered, each was designated one or two days. They raised awareness for their missions and their work. All 14 groups also sold their own merchandise that directly benefited their organizations. Our store manager, Susan McMahon, arranged special performances by the Lake Forest Civic Orchestra, Deer Path Middle School Choir, Lake Forest High School Brass Ensemble, and the Madrid, the Lake Forest High School, Madrigal, I don't know if that's how you pronounce it, the singers, and Bel Canto singers. So, and the other thing I want to mention here about the pop-up is that Lake Forest Bank and Trust sponsored the holiday pop-ups. So a big shout out to the bank for their generous support. Can move on to Lake Forest Love. So Lake Forest Love continues to be an exciting success story for our marketing work. We have close to 800 subscribers to a bi-weekly newsletter that Dana is putting together and pushing out. What's really exciting with this, with this work is the organizations, there was a piece, I don't know if you saw the piece on Ragdale, Equestrian Connection, the organizations that are appearing in Lake Forest Love are also including those stories in their respective social, you know, their presence on social media and also any newsletters that they have in their websites. So that, that's also driving traffic and building interest in what's happening on Lake Forest Love. So, so our open rate, I forgot to mention for the bi-weekly newsletter, we have an opening rate of 70%, which is really an extraordinary success to see. Dana has put together a Valentine's Day campaign to raise awareness for the blog. It is hashtag Lake Forest Love, and she is encouraging everybody who is interested in posting a picture or anything they'd like to talk about, anything they love about Lake Forest, and to tag both the city and hashtag Lake Forest Love. And they have put together a campaign that will recognize certain people with some swag merchandise. So you can email it to the city of Lake Forest or, or tag it with the hashtag @LakeForestLove or hashtag Lake Forest or City of Lake Forest. And Dana can confirm that for us after, after I finish with these slides. And the next slide is about the dialogue. I hope you've all received the second edition of the redesign of the dialogue. I want to recognize our new graphic designer, Taiyi Suzo, who joined us in September. She's with Parks and Rec Group, and she took this wonderful photograph, or both photographs, and so really happy to have her on board. I'm really impressed with the quality of this redesigned publication. I read it from cover to cover. I think it's elegant and engaging. I love the sections. Everything about it, I think, is just top-notch. So really excited to, to see how this continues to, to shape the news in, in the city of Lake Forest. Next slide. So the committee coalition that we started last summer, Dana hosted a meeting, so it's a quarterly meeting with all of these, all these community organizations. She hosted a Zoom on January 28th, and the next meeting is scheduled at Croya for April. Again, I, I just, I think that the feedback that we're getting from these organizations has been extremely positive, a byproduct of the city having re-engaged these groups in a coalition kind of setting, is recently, just last month, it was Lake Forest Open Lands Association pulled together members from this coalition to brainstorm ideas for a year-long Native American initiative. And it was clearly, you know, something that came together as a result of these organizations starting to, you know, get to know each other and, and visit with each other in person or online and get to meet each other and throw out ideas, brainstorm. So it's really exciting to see how this is kind of benefiting in so many other ways. And that Native American Initiative is something that is being planned right now, and all of these organizations will be taking part in it in some way. I think that, is that the last slide I have? So the only other thing that I wanted to mention is, you know, the mayor and I have talked about, we have about roughly 1,000 new homeowners in the city of Lake Forest, and we want to make sure that we harness that enthusiasm, that energy in a way through the newcomers club or some other manner. So Dana and I are going to be spending a little bit more time thinking about how we can take advantage of, of that new, really exciting group of residents, community residents that have joined us here. So if anybody has any questions, I know Dana is on hand to answer anything if you have any specific questions or comments.
Jennifer, I just wanted to say thank you. I mean, that's been an outstanding job, and you mentioned the newcomers of the community. What you're doing is really important to get those folks kind of integrated into what it means to be in Lake Forest. So well done, and thanks very much.
You're welcome, Jen. If you have any ideas, please let Dana know.
Yeah.
Just to expand on that, again, great job. Thank you very much for you and all those others that you've mentioned that have contributed to this effort and maybe even some that we overlooked. And again, to those, we certainly express our appreciation. And I think it does do a lot to enhance the community spirit that we value so much in our community. And to the extent we're able to reach out to the newcomers, to have them participate, become part of our community so much better. Thank you for all you're doing.
I just wanted to give a shout out to Susan McManus, who sort of oversees the pop-up. She's there for weeks and coordinating, helping coordinate everything with the city. And she just does a fabulous job, plus she's incredibly inviting when you walk in there. So, you know, a special thanks to her for all of her efforts.
Jennifer, a great job. Also hearing from the other side, from one of the organizations who had items to sell in the pop-up shop, I think they were learning too about price points and what the consumers would purchase. So I think as this continues to evolve and unfold, and we can, hopefully we'll see this continue, I think the, the different organizations will also streamline their product offering so we have a really robust selection.
Yeah, good point. Thanks, Hymen.
So I just, I'm not sure it was as clear as, as it might be that, you know, this all started, the coalition and these collaborations between all these different not-for-profit organizations in town really came out of the original idea for the pop-up shop. And I mean, that just turned out to be a really powerful idea, to just bring all these groups together to do something together, you know, with, with a structure attached, but, but it made it easier for them. And now they're all collaborating and talking to each other and, you know, working on things together. And I think it just, there's real synergy that's come out of this that I think is a... I don't know, it was, I'd have to say it was, I assume it was an unintended consequence, but it's, it turned out to be a really, really good spark of an idea. And it's, it's becoming quickly institutionalized, I think, which is great. Are there comments or questions for Alderman Karas? No, and great to see the revenue numbers rising every time. That's, that's a, that's a mark of, of progress all by itself. All right, well, thank you, and thanks to, and thanks to all the members of the not-for-profits and all the people on the marketing committee who have contributed ideas and hard work and blood, sweat, and tears to make all these things happen, so. So thanks. Next item on the agenda is items for omnibus vote consideration. There are four, delightfully single-digit number. First is approval of January 18th, 2022, city council meeting minutes. Second is approval of the check register for the period of January 1 through 28, 2022. Third is approval for an advancement of fiscal year 2023 capital equipment funding to purchase one replacement marked police vehicle included in the fiscal year 2023 capital equipment budget to the Illinois Department of Central Management Services low bidder, Morrow Brothers Ford, Inc., in the amount of $39,905. And fourth is consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation for the building review board, and that one would be first reading, and if desired by the council, final approval. Let me make a quick comment about night number three. The reason we are being asked to advance funding so that we can acquire a new unbudgeted police vehicle is because about three weeks ago, in the middle of the night, somebody rammed into a parked on the side of the road doing, you know, radar duty, police vehicle on Wesley Road on the, on the familiar killing field of the hill. And it was a very, very serious accident. Still not trying, still trying to figure out how, what this person was thinking when they just all by themselves ran into the back of the car. But luckily, the officer wasn't seriously injured. He's back on duty, but the, the, I believe it was a Ford Explorer police vehicle was totaled. And, you know, it's, this is a job that's not without risks, especially in the night. And our police continue to do a great job. They, they had, it was a, they're, they're also, the car went on after hitting the police car to knock over a gas, or a gas installation about 100 yards up the road. So they had to shut down Wesley Road for three or four hours in the middle of the night while the... Anyway, it was a, it was a very serious situation. And, and I think probably 99.9% of the community is completely unaware because it was all handled so professionally. And thankfully, our, our policeman was not, was not seriously injured. So anyway, sorry to wax on about that, but it's, these are, these things do happen here, and people need to be on their guard, so. So any item here that any member of the council would like to take separately or pull out of the omnibus consideration? In that case, I would call for a roll call vote.
Mr. Mayor, can we get a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No move.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Here we go.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Morris.
Hi.
Alderman Karas.
Hi.
Alderman Rommel.
Hi.
Alderman Notes.
Hi.
Hi.
Alderman Preschlack.
Hi.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Hi.
Alderman Bushman.
Hi.
Alderman Weber.
Hi.
Eight yay, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is old business. First item of old business, first and only item, is approval of a loan agreement with the Ragdale Foundation to borrow $1.5 billion from the city to be paid from pledge commitments over a five-year period. Elizabeth Hollup will describe this for us.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council members. Lots of exciting things are happening at Ragdale, as evidenced by the fact that they've been on your city council agenda frequently over the last few months. The item requested for action this evening is formalization and approval of a loan agreement with Ragdale for a $1.5 million loan to be repaid over five years. This loan was approved in concept by the city council in April of 2021, at which time city staff and the city attorney, representatives of Ragdale and Ragdale's legal counsel have since been working through the drafting of the legal agreements to come, to complement other actions that you've taken recently on projects on the Ragdale property. Just as a reminder, Ragdale, the property is owned by the city, but it is operated by Ragdale Foundation. And it's noteworthy that the capital improvements being made are actually benefiting the city's property at no cost to the city. One primary reason why the city is supportive of funding them, this one and a half million dollar loan. As mentioned, this was approved in concept in April of last year. I just wanted to provide some additional highlights on the loan agreement before you. Consistent with the action taken in April, the amount is $1.5 million at a 2% interest rate. As we noted, that's a little bit higher than the city can earn on its funds currently in a depository bank, and so it's a benefit of the city. And it's also a rate that's a little lower than Ragdale would get trying to finance this in the private market. So it's certainly a win-win for all. At the council's request to maintain the greatest amount of flexibility for Ragdale based on the funding needs that they might have, we have provided in this loan agreement a three-year borrowing term. This will give Ragdale the flexibility of drawing down on the $1.5 million in increments that work for them and also reduces interest costs for them over a three-year period. At the end of the three-year borrowing term or on the date that they have fully drawn down the $1.5 million, the five-year repayment cycle would begin. So if they take the full three years to draw down the $1.5 million, the full term of the loan would be eight years. But if they draw it down immediately, then that term would be five years. So it's flexible to offer them the benefit of reduced interest costs. We also wanted to just clarify that the collateral and anticipated in April of '21 was through a William Blair investment account. Instead, Ragdale has arranged for the Chicago Community Trust Endowment Fund to serve as collateral at the lower of the current principal balance, or $1 million. However, that might fluctuate through the term of the loan. So that is the, the final provision of collateral in the loan agreement before you. As noted, in April of '21, the use of the proceeds will be all for capital improvements, and that is provided for in the loan agreement. And throughout the loan period, the Ragdale Foundation will provide the city quarterly financial reports as well as a report on fundraising pledges. This is really bridge financing for long-term pledge commitments for their capital campaign. So this will allow the city an opportunity to see what those pledge commitments are backing the loan provided. So with that, I will close and answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Elizabeth? Okay, hearing none, I would request a motion to approve a loan agreement with the Ragdale Foundation to borrow $1.5 million from the city to be paid back from pledge commitments over a five-year period.
No move.
Second.
Whatever.
Hey, a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris.
Hi.
Alderman Karas.
Hi.
Alderman Rommel.
Hi.
Alderman Notes.
Hi.
Alderman Preschlack.
Hi.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Hi.
Alderman Bushman.
Hi.
Alderman Weber.
Hi.
Eight yay, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you. A win-win for the city and for Ragdale and for the citizens and the people who benefit. Actually, I think we all benefit from having Ragdale there, so. Great news, great that they're moving forward with such exuberance. Next item on the agenda is new business. We have two items of new business. So let's see, yes. Consideration of ordinances approving code amendments to allow mobile food and beverage vendors to operate in the city of Lake Forest as part of a special community, as part of special community events and establishing a permit fee. This is first reading, and Kathy Zerniak will present some information.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Last spring, the city council approved, approved a food truck pilot program. And based, building on that success, we are back before you this evening to suggest that we continue that program on an ongoing basis. A quick review, after the council approved the pilot program, which was admittedly a bit late in the year, I think we started this program in June, the city issued 17 permits. Seven of those were to local businesses. And 10 of those were to, to mobile businesses who were from outside the community or at least businesses that did not have a brick and mortar location. You may recall that local businesses who already were holders of Lake Forest health licenses were not, not charged a permit fee. The businesses who were not health license holders did pay a permit fee of $100. The revenue we received was $1,000. Recognizing this program was really more about adding vitality to community events as opposed to being a revenue generator. The 17 businesses who obtained permits did participate in a variety of community events. The permits allowed them to operate on public properties as part of these events, public streets and parking lots in other public locations. And as you can see from the slide on the screen, the various vendors offered all sorts of good things to eat and drink. We received favorable feedback from all parties, and really, we've received a number of calls already this year from vendors asking if we're continuing the program. What we heard very loudly last year and surprised us frankly was that this isn't just about trucks. We had many businesses call us and initiate the conversation by saying, well, I, I want to participate in these events, but I don't have a truck. So we, of course, welcomed them, whether they had a cart or a table or a wagon. So building on that and to better communicate what this program is about, you will notice in the documents in front of you, we have changed the name of the program, and the code amendments refer to mobile food and beverage vendors. Going forward, we recommend that an annual permit continue to be required. What that allowed us to do was verify that the vendors who offered products to the public, who participated in public events, did in fact have the proper, proper credentials, which include a health license from the county health department. We communicated closely with the county health department to be sure that we were aligning with their requirements, and we got good advice from them. We recommend that we continue the annual fee at $100, that we continue to waive that fee for local businesses. Local businesses, depending on the type and the size, are required to obtain a health license, and those licenses range from about $250 annually to $600, $650 annually. And I believe the local businesses really appreciated not having to pay that additional fee, and, and that really recognizes them as already being an important part of our community. Permit holders, and, and we will maintain a list of permit holders, we'll make that available to... Permit holders, and we will maintain a list of permit holders, we'll make that available to event organizers throughout the community. They will be eligible without further permitting to participate in community special events. And that may be events that the city organizes specifically for mobile food and beverage vendors, whether we do it in a parking lot, whether we do it on a certain afternoon in the central business district, whether it's part of an event at a park or at the beach. I think it provides us the opportunity to look creatively at new types of events, as well as really helps out not-for-profits like Horton or the Chamber of Commerce who are looking for vendors. We will have a ready list to hand them. Importantly, vendors on private property, if someone brings in someone to cater a private party, or if one of the private clubs brings in a taco truck as part of a wedding, those vendors are not licensed through the city. They are not on public property. They're not offering services to the public. So those vendors, as has occurred for many, many years, will not require a city permit, but certainly, we encourage all who have private events to assure that the vendors are properly permitted through Lake County with the proper health license. The recommended action before the council tonight is to approve first reading of an ordinance, really continuing the code amendments that you approved last spring, which sunsetted December 1st of 2021. To reapprove those code amendments, we have made only minor changes, basically to tweak the language to recognize that we're not just talking about food trucks, but mobile vendors. And second, to approve an ordinance that establishes the permit fee. We are presenting these for first reading. There is no urgency, so we wanted to allow the opportunity between this meeting and your next meeting. If anyone had public comments, we would welcome those. If you approve both of these tonight with first reading, we will return these on the omnibus agenda at your next meeting. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Kathy?
Mayor, I have a general comment. I know we got started a little bit late with this last summer, and we decided that we wanted to sunset it and revisit it, which we are right now, because this will be our first opportunity for a full year. Would it make sense to sunset it again and make us revisit it next January? So in consideration of the fact that we're sort of expanding what this original intent was, and I'm comfortable the other way, but I thought I'd put it out there for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I can offer some thoughts and response.
Okay.
We were very pleased with the program, and there really were no issues. Keep in mind that if we identify issues, or if we identify the need to further tweak the ordinance, or add some limitations, or remove limitations, we can always bring a code amendment back to the City Council. It wouldn't be necessary to sunset it. So I think we have that flexibility either way, but just offering that as a comment.
Just responding to Alderman Gashkarian, I think it's a good point, but I think if Kathy were to come back next January in that timeframe you mentioned, and give us a report, and not sensitive, but just take her report and make adjustments as needed.
Seems prudent. Alderman Weber?
Thank you. I think it's really wonderful to move forward, and I actually think there is a sense of urgency. I think last year, we found that a lot of these vendors were booked up. If we were looking to perhaps expand to a weeknight at the Westlake Forest train station, maybe something weekly or monthly, and I'm sure Kathy, it's on your radar, but, you know, vendors do book up early, and so I think now's the time to move forward.
Thank you. Alderman Bushman?
Thank you. Yeah, again, I think we're doing the right thing by closely watching it, having had a good experience, and looking forward even to better experience. And again, I like the idea where we review it. It comes back, Kathy, where you can tell us how it has gone this upcoming year. The two questions I have, I saw where you have is the products of the service trucks and carts and whatnot, wine and beer. When you're dealing with an alcoholic vendor, knowing how it's heavily regulated in our code, how is that handled, or is it trigger anything additional beyond selling tacos or popcorn?
We do work closely with the city clerk, Biddy Boyer, to make sure that all proper licenses are in place. We also work closely with the event coordinators. So we are careful with those that serve liquor.
So under our current ordinances, you're comfortable that they're able to operate out of this type of facility, assuming they have a liquor license, whatever category it would be?
Yes, we've discussed that in depth.
Okay. The second question is, I know people express concerns about the sanitary aspects of these operations, and also, as opposed to a restaurant where you may have restroom facilities. I'm wondering if you could comment a little bit about any concerns that you have in the sanitary area like these issues?
Keep in mind that these vendors, in order to get a city license, must have a Lake County health license, and Lake County inspectors, as well as city inspectors, inspect these events and inspect the vendors. If there is an issue with a vendor, the county notifies the city. So we are continuously in communication and tracking these activities. Certainly, events like the art fair, for instance, restrooms are provided onsite. They're not required to be provided by individual vendors. That really is the responsibility of the special event organizer. We did note that one thing we need to look at more specifically is a requirement for vendors to provide trash cans and recycling cans nearby. So we will continue to work. Again, that's something that we need to not only work with the vendor, but work with the special event organizers. Keep in mind that we also have a special event permitting process. When organizers apply for a special event, we identify various city departments that need to be involved. We maintain a citywide calendar for special events. So we work closely to try and, depending on the event, identify particular areas of concern or that need special attention. So I feel that the sanitary aspects are covered, and especially because of the involvement of Lake County Health Department.
Okay, and too, I assume, from your community development department, you know, to the extent you're monitoring it, if you see something that's not right, you'll take action appropriately.
Yes.
Alderman Notes?
The only thing to add, again, to take Alderman Weber's point about urgency, I think, and also supporting Kathy's decision to not have a sunset at the end of the year. And I think we can really pick up momentum if these vendors can know year in and year out that this is something they might be able to do again next year, and help plan for subsequent year events. I think could really help build momentum immensely. So I support the Kathy Cerniak's position to keep this running unless we're advised otherwise.
Alderman Rummel?
Kathy, can you just expand a little bit about when we talk about city-issued health licenses? Because I'm a little confused about the role of the county versus the city. Who's inspecting? Are they county inspectors? Are they city inspectors? How frequently are they inspected? Are they inspected once a year before we? I just expand on how we're watching the cleanliness, sanity. I understand the litter, and I think that Alderman Bushman with the restroom facilities raises a good point. But also, can you expand a little bit about how we're guaranteeing the sanitation of the actual kitchens and food making?
For, the county really has the primary responsibility for the health aspects, whether it's a mobile cart, a truck, the kitchen of an established restaurant, a food store. The county regularly inspects. I can't tell you how often. I don't know that they identify how often, but they regularly inspect all facilities who offer food and beverage for sale to the public. The city also has its own health license. We don't do the sanitary inspections, but it's a way for us to track which businesses are operating in the community. For any newly established business, we coordinate closely with the county health department. Both city inspectors do inspections, and county inspectors do inspections of any new kitchen. Again, with respect to mobile vendors, we are in communication with the county. They have a regular program where they track where these mobile vendors are going to be, and they show up unannounced, and look to make sure they have handwashing facilities, for example. They monitor how food is packaged, where it's prepared. Those responsibilities are the county's. We really rely on them and work with them to keep them informed as to events that we're having, and locations where these vendors are going to be. So it really is a joint effort, but the county has that responsibility for sanitation and health aspects of those operations.
Yeah, I just think that these mobile kitchens, you know, just strike me as a little bit, I don't know, that they're pushed, they're put away for a while, and they're brought out again. You know, I'd just be interested, maybe offline, if you could just check with the county and see how frequently they're inspected. Are they inspected the beginning of the season? You know, I'd like to feel that they're all scrubbed down really well in the spring before they venture out on their first jobs and things like that. Would you mind just getting a little bit, you know, more information on that?
Sure.
Any other questions or comments for Kathy? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to grant first reading of first and ordinance approving amendments to sections 113.21, 117.05, 117.20B, and the addition of new sections 120.01 through 120.03.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris.
Hi.
Alderman Karas.
Hi.
Alderman Rummel.
Hi.
Alderman Notes.
Hi.
Alderman Preschlag.
Hi.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Hi.
Alderman Bushman.
Hi.
Alderman Weber. Eight yay, zero nay. Motion carries.
Okay, and second, an ordinance, motion to approve or to grant first reading of an ordinance establishing a permit fee for food trucks. It says food trucks, but I think we mean mobile dining establishments, correct?
Correct. Sorry about that.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris.
Hi.
Alderman Karas.
Hi.
Alderman Rummel.
Hi.
Alderman Notes.
Hi.
Alderman Preschlag.
Hi.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Hi.
Alderman Bushman.
Hi.
Alderman Weber.
Hi.
Eight yay, zero nay. Motion carries.
Okay, great. Well, glad this is going so well, and just a quick thought, with this approved list of mobile vendors that the city's going to have, I would think that might have some benefit to residents as well, who are looking for, you know, doing these kinds of things in their backyard for a birthday party.
We've talked about that, Mr. Mayor, in conjunction with potential block parties, too.
Right, right, so.
Weber's ice cream truck.
The next item on the agenda, new business, is discussion and direction, and this is an information-only discussion item. Discussion and direction on whether to establish regulations, requirements, or parameters regarding flavored tobacco and electronic cigarette products. There's, again, no action requested. It's a discussion item. We had a presentation a couple of meetings ago from some enterprising students from Lake Forest High School proposing that we ban flavored vaping products. And I wanted to get a sense of the council as to whether this is something we would be inclined to pursue. We'll have, you know, brief discussion, and then I'm going to ask for public comment, and then we will take it under advisement. So Alderman Morris?
So as you just mentioned, the students talked about vaping products, but the ordinance talks about vaping products and flavored tobacco products. So it seems like it's gone on beyond just what the students were asking, is I understand it. Is that correct?
Good point, and I think that's sort of referring to menthol cigarettes.
Right.
Which brings with it its own set of complicating factors, in my opinion, but other comments?
Well, one more, and that's just enforcement. I don't know how, I don't expect the police department to enforce this ordinance by visiting these establishments. So I'd be curious how enforcement's supposed to happen, or how it happens in other communities, if there's a way we can check on that.
Any comment from staff?
Yeah, and I can ask to have Chief Waldorf promoted to the screen. He could probably answer it, you know, in greater detail than I can, but certainly, that part of our licensing process would be clarifying what products are allowed to be sold and which are not. And then I do think the police department periodically would, you know, check on stores to ensure compliance with the ordinance. I think depending on what the City Council may wish to consider, again, it's fairly limited in scope in terms of the number of impacted businesses. There are relatively few number of businesses that even possess a tobacco license. So I think from a compliance perspective, the scope is pretty limited. Carl, anything you want to add?
No, I think you covered it well. Generally, I think what we're seeing in anyone with this type of ordinance, and it's still a fairly small number, I think we're seeing a lot more community development-type inspections versus police, but we could certainly do either way.
Alderman Rummel?
While we have the chief on, it was my understanding, perhaps mistakenly, that from time to time the police would sort of monitor establishments in town who were licensed to sell tobacco products to be sure that they weren't selling to people under the legal age. Is that still going on? It was a question that I posed earlier to the city manager. Maybe that was mostly happening when the age was 18. I thought, anyway, that was my understanding, that we sent in some younger-looking individuals to try and purchase tobacco products, and from time to time, sort of managed that way. Is that? So maybe I'm giving away a state secret. I don't know.
No, no, it's not a state secret. We've been participating in that program for many years. We stopped just the cigarette side of that during COVID, because it does require us to work with juveniles under the age of 18. So we paused that for the last two years during COVID. The other problem we have is logistical. That program requires a state certification for the officers who are performing it. Both of the former school resource officers who are certified are now supervisors, and we've had trouble getting the class to send the two new school resource officers to, to get them certified. So we will get that back on track. It's really just a matter of first certification, and then working with the appropriately aged personnel.
And so is it correct, in my assumption, that there's one vendor of these flavored tobacco products in the town?
There is, just one.
Well, so I guess it just seems to me that if we haven't been hearing a lot, have there been complaints of underage selling from that vendor that we're aware of?
Not to us, but I'd also ask Kathy if she had any. Not to us, but I'd also ask Kathy if she had any.
I think I'm live again. No, we have not received any complaints about the Shell Station.
Well, it's good to point out that this is already not legal. I mean, if the objective is to stop these things from being sold to underage people, that's already illegal.
Right, and that's getting to be my point here. You know, it's, you can't buy products under the age of twenty-one already. We have a single vendor in town that this has the potential to inordinately impact, and we have no evidence that we have a problem with selling these products from this particular vendor to underage students. Is that kind of a fair assessment?
Sorry, I'll jump in. Yeah, I think that is an appropriate assessment.
Thank you.
I concur with that assessment.
Well, I, if I could add, Alderman Rummel and I followed up with the students who presented to city council a couple of months back because we didn't have an opportunity to engage them in any questions. So we wanted to hear a little bit more about their concern. And, you know, I, I, I do, I do think, I obviously applaud them for coming forward, you know, to recognize an issue that they feel very strongly is just that, an issue that is affecting the well-being of their peers. So as a community, I think it's important to encourage students to, you know, to talk about these things among each other with their, you know, their, their teachers and with community leaders. So I, I, one of the things when we met that day, we met also with their teacher and a representative from, I believe Melanie was the Lake County Health Department. And she said that every other year they do a survey, it's an anonymous survey for students both in middle school and the high school, sort of take their temperature and try to understand, you know, the usage of alcohol and tobacco products. That's coming up this year. In fact, I think it's supposed to get underway, it's supposed to be administered maybe this month. So I, I, you know, I think it'd be really helpful for us to, you know, see the results of that survey. I think the results come in maybe, I don't know, Melanie, was it six weeks or so, six to eight weeks that they turn that, that around and, and have, you know, a report of their findings? So I, I think it'd be interesting for us to take a look at what those findings are. And if this is an issue, again, I think the assumption is that this is a broad-based issue. If it is an issue, then maybe staff and, and council members can, can think about an educational campaign to help raise awareness around this and get Koya involved, Lead involved, the organizations that, you know, really have their, their fingers on the pulse of behavior. You know, there's a lot of stress, there's a lot of anxiety that's going on in our, not just in our community, of course, across the country with young people for a variety of reasons, including of course, the pandemic. So, so I, I just think it's, it's great to, to listen to, to our young people.
Thank you, Alderman Karas. Yes, we did have a, a meeting with students and their teacher and a representative from the health department and they're very concerned and rightly so that these products are showing up at their parties. And I think the figure was something like when we asked them, when you go to a party, how many students have these? And I think it was around twenty to twenty-five percent of the students. So are not, you know, are maybe not taking action in terms of an ordinance, but instead encouraging community education on it through the, some of the organizations that Alderman Karas suggested doesn't diminish the problem that is out there. It's just how to most effectively address it. And so once again, I'd like to commend these students for bringing forward to the city council an issue that they see within their social group and within their school. They're talking about, they see this even in the bathrooms at their schools. But it's, it's just sort of cause and effect. I don't know that we have the fact, have a direct nexus between the Shell Station offering these products and them winding up directly in the hands of students. We don't see that the Shell Station is selling to underage students and it's like so many other things that people under the age of twenty-one shouldn't be getting their hands on. They find it somewhere. Unfortunately.
But it doesn't, doesn't seem as if they're finding it in this particular lot, spot. And so, you know, passing an ordinance, which I think could be perceived as sort of unfriendly to business, in a situation where somebody's acting and running their business in a lawful manner seems a bit, seems like a bit of an overreach to me. That's just my, my two cents.
Exactly my point. There's, we don't have a direct nexus between this vendor and the problem, really, so. But I certainly do encourage further education on the topic through the schools and you know, maybe even including it in one of our newsletters, although I'm not sure we get a lot of readership from under twenty-one-year-olds.
Okay, well, with that, I would turn over the microphone for public comment. Could we put the number up on the screen and?
Mr. Mayor, we have three, three raised hands in the audience. Our first raised hand is Bill Lombardius, and we'll bring him in momentarily.
Anyone hear me?
You're live.
Oh, great. Did you get, I can't, can you guys see me?
Uh, no, we see your name.
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for inviting me in. Mayor Ponderleón, Councilman Alderman, Kathy. Again, I respect and acknowledge your concerns regarding teenagers and vaping. I have many customers twenty-one and over that appreciate the convenience of the product being sold at my store. Before, it was eighteen and older, and that was a couple of years ago that they raised it to be twenty-one and older, uh, age limit. I mean, it also promotes other purchases at my gas station. At the same time, they buy these cigarettes. It is a gas station convenience store. I can't make everyone happy if I sell e-cigarettes. I make the kids unhappy. If I don't sell them, then my current customers will be upset because they are now inconvenienced and will go elsewhere to purchase it. Again, this will ultimately affect my business, my family, and my staff members. I have owned the Shell Station here and I'm a chamber member for twenty years and appreciate all of my customers. Again, these are unprecedented times and I strive to act as a responsible business owner, and we continue to enforce the law to check identification, so no one under the age of twenty-one purchases those products at my store. I empathize with the parents and teachers and students that are being affected by the usage in school, but they are not getting it from my establishment. Hello?
You're still on.
Okay, great. I mean, that, I mean, that pretty much sums it up. I mean, I, with all due respect, I would be more concerned about bullying and other issues in school and and actual drugs that are there. And again, I sympathize with the kids, but even if, as far as educational programs, I agree. I mean, I like to be involved with them myself, and if they need anything to reach out to me, I'm always available. We are all there once ourselves.
Good, okay. Well, thank you very much, and we appreciate your ongoing service to the community.
Mr. Mayor, we have a second raised hand, Scott Seaman, who is a high school student.
Okay.
Hello, everyone. I was just going to reiterate what I said about, I would say a month and a half ago when we first presented this, that we're speaking from personal experience of being in the high school and being a teenager, and that I do see it, and I still see it on a regular basis of people at the high school and when I was at the middle school, even at the middle school level, using these products. And I would say it was around seventh grade when they started doing these educational campaigns for our health classes about, you know, the harm of flavored tobacco products and e-cigarettes. And that's happened, I would say, every, I, I would assume every year, at least since I've been a freshman, or since I've been seventh grade up to my freshman year when I had my Wellness for Life class. And even in the twenty, I, I believe it's the twenty twenty survey that they distribute to the schools, it says eighty-one percent of youth who report ever using tobacco products use flavored tobacco products. So I, I wouldn't say, I would say this is a very big problem and my, my, we did discuss with Alderman Karas and Alderman Rummel about an edginal, educational campaign, but you know, the, the concern that the student, at least I have, along with Gabe Guiderini and Renzo Miucci, is that we've had these educational campaigns for the past few years and the numbers only seem to go down when there's regulation on the product. For example, we saw a decline. I'd have to look at the exact numbers, but we saw a decline in the use of these products when they banned the flavors in Juul, the, the, all, there was, it used to be a popular pod-based system. But even with that, they sold out ment- and menthol products, which increased by fifty percent once those other flavors such as like mango, I believe, it was other fruit products that were associated with it, but the ones that are remaining increased. So I, I, I do understand where everyone is coming from on the council with an educational campaign, but it just seems, at least in my experience, that it, it hasn't done as much as it, as we think it should have. So that is why we're pursuing a policy to ban the sale.
Right. Thank you, and, and thanks for bringing this to our attention and for all your efforts and research and so forth. It's been, it's been educational for us. So, next comment?
Next comment, raised hand is Andy Duran.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Hi, Andy.
Hi, great. Good evening, aldermen and women. First, thank you very much for your service to our community, and a special thanks to the young man who just presented from the high school and all his classmates for the great work they've done on this and for their guidance from the Lake County Health Department. My name's Andy Duran, CEO of local organization Lead, based right here in Lake Forest, referenced earlier in this meeting. Also a member of the Board of Education at Lake Forest School to sixty-five. So like you, I'm an elected community leader. Lead has been advocating for youth in our community for more than thirty years, and I've been working directly with teens and young adults in Lake Forest and since I first came to the area in two thousand and one. Reason for me addressing you tonight is to strongly, and I do mean strongly, recommend that you consider a ban of flavored vape and e-cigarette devices in the city of Lake Forest. I don't come to you often asking for things strongly, but that's how strongly I feel about this. We're not just mired in one pandemic, COVID. We still find ourselves amid a teen vaping pandemic that predates COVID. An important step in addressing the youth vaping epidemic is to remove non-tobacco flavored vaping products from the market. There is no question that flavors lead to increased use, none. This is the very reason that Congress passed the Family Smoking Prevention and Tobacco Control Act in October two thousand and nine, which banned cigarettes with flavors other than a dollar tobacco from the sale in the, in the United States. Not surprisingly, after that went into effect, the US saw a drastic decline in teen cigarette smoking in the two decades since. When I go into schools every week, right here in Lake Forest, and I ask students why they think so many of their peers have gotten into vaping when so many of them are no longer smoking cigarettes, they undoubtedly say this, because they taste good. Furthermore, a twenty eighteen study referenced just a minute ago by the student who spoke, this is a study by the NIH, revealed that eighty-one percent of youth e-cigarette users said they used e-cigarettes, quote, "because they come in flavors I like." There is no question that there are some students here in Lake Forest now addicted to nicotine who would not be so addicted had they not been able to access flavored e-cigarettes and vapes so conveniently as your store owner just said, right here in Lake Forest. This is history repeating itself, and we continue to allow it to happen. These are our community's young people. I know them. You have a letter from me in your packet that includes some additional local data, including results from our Illinois Youth Survey. What I will highlight from that data is this, much work was done in this community since twenty eighteen to curb vaping, specifically in partnership with Lake Forest Schools and Lake Forest City Council. As a result, we realized a sharp decline in e-cigarette use over fifty percent in all grade levels in Lake Forest in twenty twenty. You talk about educational campaigns, this was one of the reasons. This is one of the things we did and we continue to do. But this kind of prevention strategy does not yield long-term behavior change over time. What does yield long-term behavior change over time is regulation of the product and a new way thinking about using local ordinances to help solicit long-term environmental change. Taking this next step to ban flavors from the market will undoubtedly help us to continue this positive trend. This is the next step, and I believe it is our responsibility. We know flavor bans work. Communities both large and small that have laws in place to ban flavors have seen significant two-year declines in youth use. We expect that we will see even greater long-term outcomes. Let me be clear, the primary benefit of flavor bans is not to reduce the use of tobacco by those who are already using. The primary and long-term positive outcome is that flavor bans will prevent new teen users from offsetting to tobacco products in the first place. By doing this, we're protecting future generations. You may hear retailers in our community say that they have, quote, "never had a citation for underage tobacco sales." This may be true, however, I can tell you from working with our teams that products that eventually get into their hands, the hands of our local students, were in fact purchased within this community. Variety of ways that happens. Secondly, while the retailer in town where these are sold may not have had a citation for underage tobacco sales, there have been multiple violations of our local signage ordinances for both vaping tobacco products and alcohol products. Our ordinance that prevents exterior tobacco and alcohol signage, it's routine for us to do environmental scans at that location, and I can't even count the number of violations we have found there over time. And working with Kathy Sarniak and the city, we're able to get those removed, but it happens repeatedly, time and time again, including fairly recently. They know the local laws, but they've still bent those anyway. As someone who's an elected leader of our Lake Forest, Lake Forest community, I have a firsthand understanding of the complex decisions that we're presented with on a regular basis. Well, I know there are complexities to this decision as well, including one that, that might impact the one business in town that sells them. We can all align on one thing, and that's keeping our youth safe. There's only one choice that leads to this outcome. Here's the bottom line. The retail stores itself, flavored vapes have one thing to gain, profit. Lead has another goal, and we do it every day, simply to keep kids alive. It's your job, just as it is mine, to make reasonable policy that keeps the health and well-being of our young people and our residents front and center. I would hope that we are a community that values the future of our young people over any profits or any single business might gain. The city of Lake Forest has made concessions for this business in the past at the expense of youth safety. It's time for us to win one for public health. As far as I'm concerned, this is an easy win. Thank you for your commitment to protecting both our youth of today and the youth of our future. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Andy, and thank you for the fabulous work that you do with Lead and all the benefits that members of our community and actually people all over the country are, are gaining from your work, so. Are there any more raised hands or?
Yep, yes, sir, we have one more raised hand. Gabe Guiderini.
Hello, is my mic working?
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'd like to give my short time that I have here to echo the statements made by Scott Seaman earlier. As a Lake Forest High School student entering in the middle of his, of my fourth year in Lake Forest High School, and as a member of the community for my entire life, I really do think that teenage vaping and the use of these substances is becoming a very bad problem. It has been a bad problem for about four years at this point. It was about four years ago when I started to recognize that there was a serious problem that was going on. And I had friends and people that I knew, people that I was very close with, who became very, became very in, were put in a very bad position and were using these substances and became very different people and became and put themselves in harm's way and put others in harm's way as well by exposing them to these toxic substances and by passing their behavior on to them. And I think that just knowing so many people and knowing how much of a problem this still is at Lake Forest High School, contrary to what people are saying, it still is a problem at the high school. It still is a problem in the community from what I've observed. And it still is something that is affecting teenagers and And it still is something that is affecting teenagers and their daily lives. And I think that, as Scott said, I think that data shows, and I think that, that experience shows that more legislation is probably required to push this, to, to, to bring this, this problem that we have sort of under control, even to a point that is at least better than what it is now. And I think that, and I trust that the, the board will make the right decision. And I just thank you for hearing my perspectives.
Thank you very much. Thanks for all your efforts here. Any further callers or hands raised?
We do not have any more raised hands, and then we will ask about callers.
Okay, well, thanks to everybody who spoke from the public. Certainly value your input. And I guess with that, I would turn it back to the council and see if we can develop some sort of a consensus or way forward.
And I'm happy, Mr. Mayor, to just note in light of all the feedback we've heard from the council and obviously hearing comments from the public that if there are things we can do at a staff level to brainstorm with a lot of the, you know, vested stakeholders, marshaling our resources with Coria, working closely with Lead and with our partners at the school. Happy to see what potential alternatives we can entertain to help be a positive member of a solution to this problem and can report back to the council in the future based on, on those conversations.
Sounds good. Any other comments by members of the council? Okay, well, Alderman Rommel. You're muted. Melanie, you're muted.
I don't know what the, what they're referring to when they talk about signage violations. But if that seems to be an issue with Kathy, you know, perhaps you can work with the owner to be sure that whatever signage is required is consistently in place. So that would be a recommendation that I would make.
And I'm okay with community development. It does a very good job of being proactive and staying on that. And it's less about, it's more about prohibiting certain types of signage, the neon signs, things like that, and where they can be located within the business, you know, proximity to the storefront and the windows. So I know community development is staying on top of that.
Alderman Weber.
Thank you, Mayor. I just kind of circling back to what Alderman Karas had mentioned, this survey that's going out. Would it be worth the council's time and information to hear the results? I guess I, I'm, as a mother of two little kids and kind of growing up in Lake Forest, I always knew of fellow teens that would go to the one establishment available where they would, you know, try and purchase tobacco products a long, long time ago. I, I just wonder, I'd like to find out where are they purchasing them? I mean, it, it sounds like it's not necessarily here. So I mean, people can get things anywhere, someone else purchased them. But it's a very difficult issue, and obviously we want to protect our, our kids. But I think as a business owner too, I share in the, if you have a product line that sells, that's important also to balance. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, I think Jason, probably your suggestion is well-taken to have the staff, having heard this conversation, you know, go back and brainstorm some potential directions that we might take to hopefully have some positive impact on the situation, you know, without sort of overdoing it, for lack of a better word. You know, we spent the last two years working really hard to support and encourage our local businesses. And I think, I think we also have to think about the optics of essentially singling out a, you know, a particular business for special treatment. So any other final comments before we move on to the next item, which actually is Alderman Rommel?
I just want to, again, I'm, before I was a lawyer, I was a high school history and social studies teacher. And I just want to thank the teachers who worked with these students to give them the self-confidence and the courage to bring this concern forward to the public body in their community. And I hope that they feel that they were heard by everybody on this council, including the mayor. And I certainly hope they will carry this forward into their future adult lives, that you can make a difference in your community, you can address the officials in your community, and they will listen to you. And I hope that's a message that they carry forward from this. And thank them again for all their efforts and for their teachers for encouraging them to do this. Thank you.
Well said. Okay, next item on the agenda is additional items for discussion, comments by council members. Are there any, any items we have not spoken about tonight that any member of the council wishes to bring to the table? Okay, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The opposed? Okay. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.
Bye.